Meeting order in place of Jonathan. Not here and last I heard I still in vice chair.
Yes, my spotty appearances.
The first order is to someone to suggest or move that Dan Day become an official member of the board this evening.
I'll make a motion that Dan Day moved to. Full membership status for tonight's meeting.
I second it.
And Paul is in favor.
Great.
Thank you, you're on board.
Yeah, yeah.
The first business is to give the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's interesting. You hit the call the order at this point. I already called it the order way back.
You.
All right, all business review of board minutes. September and August.
I'll make a motion that we accept July eleventh. Meeting minutes and.
There was one misspelling.
Did you?
Does it matter?
Yeah, well. I'm happy that. For July Jenny.
Yeah, it's. Oh, solar. S O L A R. And it was misspelled, I think consistently through the whole thing. It certainly. It's on a lot of the pages.
Okay.
Okay, so just someone needs to go through it. And all S O L E Rs are need to be changed as O L E Rs.
Sound appropriate to me.
It just kind of bothered me.
Okay, yeah, fair.
With that change, we have a second to Neil's motion to accept it.
I second it.
And all those in favor. Passes the August ninth meeting minutes.
Okay, um, I had one change to that one. Oh, August seventh. There was. Under other business. Under further discussion. It says Jenny Beegan stated that she has heard. You know, from several people, the apartments across the Hannaford from Hannaford are quite nice and quiet. That was like a complete non sequitur. There was a discussion around that talking about. It would be great if we could get some. Apartments, you know, residential, some apartments in the. Redevelopment of the Camden Marketplace. Site. And. As a possible model. You know, those chassis apartments are are nice. I mean, you know what I mean? That was the context. Just there needs to be another sentence.
Yeah, no, that's that's fair.
Because that just looks kind of weird.
Looking for where that.
It's it's under further. It's at the very end of it, under further discussion, part D.
Maybe I.
Just it's just an odd.
And then you say that, yes, I don't know. I mean, yes, it's. Okay, and this is in relation. To.
To to. About development at the Camden. Plaza or whatever it's called. Hampton Bank. Is it four thirty five Main Street? Makes sense.
Yeah.
And that's all I had then. Spelling was great.
Oh, good. Did you? You do English doing on the side?
Thing about spelling.
That's well, it's appreciated because I spelling is not my strength. So any fixes you find, please.
And remember, we're a team.
Right, right.
Yes.
So I'll make a motion. We accept August seventh minutes as amended.
I'll second that.
And all in favor.
Okay.
So that's accepted. We get through the minutes. The solar is the next item, but with. Not seeing anyone here, maybe we will skip. Down the Clippership.
Do we need?
I didn't. I guess we don't. And also there may be somebody. Is there anybody on Zoom now?
What I see.
Well, someone was going to come, but. Yeah, give them some time.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we can we can come back.
So with that adjustment to the agenda, you are front and center, whichever is the spokesman.
My name is Daniel McGuire. I'm the managing partner of Sandy River Company. And you assume you got the two letters that we submitted to. The mic, so appreciate that. I don't. I can't think of any project in forty years where we haven't had to ask for an extension of planning board approvals. Once we had the approvals in place, we begin designing the building. We begin pricing the building several rounds because we've been unhappy with the pricing. And then we file a certificate application, which takes probably about six months to get through. So with all of that, we're just being preemptive. We know we're not going to be able to start construction by January fourth, I think, is the date. So we'd like to extend our approvals for a year. Simple as that.
So that would be a year from January fourth is what you're requesting, correct?
Yeah, I don't want to wait till last minute and go, oh, I gotta meet with the planning board and I'm going to lose my permits and all of that. So we're just being cautious.
Our history is that that's how we have operated, but that doesn't mean that's the only way we can operate. So your request in a nutshell is to one year extension on your application and approval, so.
That's simple.
I guess all we have to do is to make a motion to.
Let's have a discussion.
Oh, well, gee, we're sorry. I was in.
Or do we make a motion and then a discussion?
Well, technically, there are. You have a.
Motion.
Motion and then you have discussion.
I'm sorry, I. I yield. Okay.
So we need a motion on this. Request.
I'll make a motion that we grant them a one year extension. From their original date of approval. I second that.
Now we can have discussion on this motion.
I I'll just say that we I met with the developer and the applicant. I think it was maybe a month ago or so. And went through this. And so I had the reason the two letters is because I asked. Separate issues and I suggested that we not wait until December, January, especially with the holidays weather. So. You know, don't want that. Practical realities to. Trip us up. But and I think I put in in that memo that I shared that. I think that the way. The ordinance reads is that any approvals expire after a year. But applicants can request an extension for up to a year. If they, you know, apply in writing. And then if work's not substantially completed within two years from the approval. The board can ask for, they don't have to, but they can ask for. A new application. So other than that, there's not really a whole lot of guidance for the board. There's not really any reason I don't see on here. To. For the board to to not extend it. If the ordinance had changed something like that. Then.
I think later. On your. Agenda. You you mentioned you wanted to discuss. Or have more criteria around when we. Grant extensions or how we do that, what what the reasoning behind it is.
Yeah, just to to expand on that. Yeah, yeah.
I I mean, I guess the big the big. Difference is if if. Or the big concern is if conditions would really change during that year. That would really affect the permit, but. Probably not. In this case, what do you guys think? I wouldn't think.
No, nothing. Nothing has changed since we met with you last and we got our approvals and we. Again, we almost, I can't even think of a time where we haven't extended and there's never been any condition or reason to extend that other than it just takes time to do these projects.
Our history in approving extensions within the year. And there's no changes. We've approved everyone that I've. Can remember in the last decade or two, I throw that off too, and they just.
But this is one of the biggest projects. In Damascada in a really long time. Or the biggest, I would say. It's going to have a huge impact on traffic, you know, on on a local. Environment, on just all sorts of things.
Yeah. I think not having been part of the original approval process and all that typically. Approvals. Or extensions. To act one way or the other, there needs to be some kind of like, what are what are we going off of? And with the, I said. The ordinance doesn't provide a whole lot, a lot to go on here. Certainly, the boards. The board can grant an extension for an approval. But the. I I'm not sure. It's not that the board couldn't grant the extension, but there's not really any likes. There's nothing to to base that on at this point unless unless the board finds something. So I would say they kind of by default, you. I would recommend that you do grant the extension. Unless we find something to discuss that would, you know, kind of direct us otherwise or direct you all otherwise.
No, I think those comments very appropriate, very appropriate. If someone can sense that there's some reason to have discussion about a point that we haven't. Mentioned until now, I'll entertain it if not. I think we should move. Not hearing any more discussion. We have a motion and a second and those approve it. The extension. Indicate so.
I'm going to abstain just to get what I did last night.
And for whatever it's worth in a record, Neil. Is abstaining from participating in that vote. So that means we did it.
Thank you very much.
And you got a positive answer.
Appreciate that. We have a second item to talk about. So right now, when we did our approvals, we got approval for a hundred and two licensed nursing care beds. And the way the building works is there's three neighborhoods of thirty four beds. One of them is skilled nursing care. Wing, if you will, or neighborhood. Another one is people that are going to be there long term. So a long term unit. And the other one was going to be long term as well. We're always reevaluating what the community really needs. We work really closely with Lincoln Health. We're replacing their beds, as you probably recall. So after a lot of discussion, great deal of discussion. We have decided to have one of those neighborhoods be residential care. What does that mean? It's really a payment category or a licensing category has no bearing on the approvals. No bearing on the site plan, no bearing on the building design, nothing changes about the project. Other than one of the units. The people that are residing there get paid through Medicaid through the residential care P and MI program that they call. So that's. That's what we're asking. We're asking to at least acknowledge, I guess, that we're going to do instead of a hundred and two licensed nursing, we're going to sixty eight licensed nursing. And thirty four licensed residential care. I normally probably wouldn't even come here to ask you to do anything about it because there's nothing changing about it, but I can just envision my attorneys at closing saying. Your CEO says this and your approvals say this and that should they should line up. So what we like to do is, I don't know if I call it amendment, I leave that up to you, but have the approvals be. I guess amended to. Be sixty eight nursing and thirty four residential care. Both those uses definitions and uses are part of your. Ordinance for that. For that zone, so it has nothing to do with changing, anything to do with zoning, nothing to do with changing our approvals. Other than simply acknowledging a change in one of the neighborhoods.
My my understanding was.
We're going to be consistent. Remember, we're going to make a motion. In a second.
But we can we can we can talk to them, but or how does that work?
Well, we can have discussion.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, yeah, I mean.
I want to ask one question.
Have a floor, Jenny. You have the floor.
I'll talk to anybody anytime.
I I thought that was the plan all along was to have the memory care units be a third. Of the. The project.
Right.
You just didn't designate it as residential. Is that the problem?
We do. Yeah.
Okay.
Originally, it was a nursing home level. Those those memory care beds were at a nursing home level and now we're having them be at unassisted living.
So it's it's comparable to Riverside.
I mean, a lot of what's driving it is the current census and occupancy of the nursing care units that we're replacing is about sixty five beds. So we don't want to build nine, a hundred and two nursing care beds and only be able to fill up one third of the building. That would not be good for the community or good for us. So we looked at it again and we said, well, there's a real need. Really strong need for residential care, memory care or assisted living, memory care. And we decided we should take one of those units and make it that. And that was with a lot of discussion with the planners and people at Lincoln Health.
And there's there's Medicare. Care money for that, but not for the other. I mean. How many? How many Medicare beds are you going to have at this?
Medicare. Or there's going to be two units, sixty eight are dual called dual certified. So they're certified to accept people on Medicare as well as Medicaid.
Or Medicaid, yeah.
Yeah, so Medicaid is a state, Medicare is the federal. You know, some of us here are on Medicare. So that's.
So I meant Medicaid, I guess.
Yeah, I I think your question is how many beds will be able to take Medicaid folks?
Yeah.
And it's all of them, even the assisted living res care, residential care.
Okay.
That P and MI designation is a is a Medicaid designation, so they would be a payer. You know, obviously, the building would be a challenge to run if it was all Medicaid. We need to have a payer mix of Medicare, some self pay and Medicaid. But every every bed is duly certified. And again, it doesn't change. The building doesn't change, the site plan doesn't change anything about the approvals, other than one neighborhood is going to have a payer source that's different.
Yeah, so I just. For the board's benefit, this was also something that we discussed when we met a month ago or so. And what I put in this memo to the board. I don't think that it really has any real effect on like the things the board would consider in terms of what's in the ordinance decision that that should be made. But I think we were in agreement that. Better safe than sorry. Make sure the board's aware of it. If we can acknowledge that in. You know, I don't think it is really, I don't think it would be necessary to amend the approval, but we can certainly. I don't think it would be necessary to amend the approval, but we can certainly. Um, just make sure that it's acknowledged that this is, this is happening, the board's aware of it and it. Doesn't rise to the. Uh, level of uh change in in use, you know, I I. The ordinance does make it a little bit weird. Because there's nursing care facility is defined and residential care facility is defined. But. As far as what uses are permitted. It it. Kind of, I think I said it co-mingles uh in the schedule of land uses and it just. Permits congregant care and independent living facilities, uh assisted living facilities, institutions. Institutions or services for the disabled, nursing care facilities, residential care facilities. Excuse me, uh and group care facilities, so they're all. Kind of lumped in one saying, yes, they're allowed in whichever district in this district, so. And there's not separate standards that are established for, you know, the different definitions, so it just kind of, the fact that they're defined separately is a little bit weird, but. They are kind of, it is identified as basically one use and handled as so throughout the. The ordinance, so.
I mean, it's it it's almost a legal issue for us, and we had the same thing happen in Portland, we're building a new nursing home um. Called Fogbrook Woods and at the eleventh hour, we decided to make some changes like that. Um, and basically, we didn't amend the application because there was nothing to change about the site plan. But the planner wrote a letter just acknowledging that that's what we were doing and that was. Really just to cover me to make sure my attorneys get us to closing and go, hey, how come the certificate of need says this and your approval say. Say this, and that's why I'm choosing to bring this here now, again preemptive to make sure I don't get. Slapped around by attorneys at the eleventh hour for closing, so.
So we don't even have to vote on this, we just have to acknowledge that they were in front of us and made us aware of it. Yeah, I you know, I. Essentially, I mean, I I. Might say, you know, do a. I might vote on it and do a like a, you know. Passes unanimous kind of thing, you know, which is, I guess, what we normally do, but. Just to so that there's formal. Uh, it's in, so it'll be in the minutes that like, yes, this was handled. But. You know, if you, I guess, maybe.
It's a tomato tomato thing in my world.
Yeah.
You know, uh. I would think it would be sufficient. To say. Or to advise you to put it in the minutes.
Yeah.
That we had this discussion. And the board is in unanimous uh agreement. With that, as opposed to an amendment, which sounds a little.
Right.
You know, why are you changing? And I don't think there's any change truly.
Yeah.
Other than clarification.
Yeah, I I think anytime like the, for me, it's anytime the board wants to make a decision, I'm like, yeah, but you know, you can do a a a vote unanimous, I don't think you need to do. But um. It's. It's a it's a little bit of a weird situation because it's kind of like, no, we're not, we don't think this rises to the need of actually taking action on it. You know, if this was already built and done. The ordinance and other places says, you know, if there's a change of use, you gotta come before the board or at least go get. Uh, code enforcement approval. I don't think that, you know, if 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 that was, if this was already built and that was happening, it wouldn't be the kind of thing that would have to. Come back, it's not, it's not a change of use.
Okay, I I will.
Assuming you all confirm.
One one thing.
Go ahead. I was just gonna say, you know, I play attorney in the middle of the night and. Work with way too many of them and I can just imagine my attorney wanting something that says the board authorized and voted for. The city planner to write us a letter to acknowledge the change in the beds. Um, other the otherwise, I think if the board didn't take any action at all, I can see my attorneys going. You know, it's not good enough, so that's, that would be my concern.
Okay. Here's my thought. I mean. I'm all, you know, I totally agree with you guys, but. In our land use ordinance, there is provision under multifamily dwellings, units that says that. No building shall contain more than thirty two dwelling units except for housing for the elderly associated with extended care facilities. Which shall contain no more than forty five dwellings.
So. If, and I don't, I don't know, I didn't look in this, but I know that.
Back, back when we were. This was brought up, you said, no, that this is all nursing. You know, level, blah, 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 you know, so it doesn't, it it was kind of a loophole, I felt. You know. We had, we had this ordinance to try to limit the size of. Of facilities and yours kind of slipped through a different way.
So I hear what you're saying and I recall the conversation pretty well. So the nursing care units don't have kitchens, they are not dwelling units, the assisted living or residential care that we're talking about. Does not have kitchens, they are not dwelling units, so it's not like it's. You know, thirty four dwelling units, there's a central kitchen and it's one unit with what happens to have. Thirty four people living on that unit, but it's not separate apartments or different and different dwelling units.
Yeah.
And that was, that's how I recall that we went through that conversation and got to the other end and said, we're fine.
Right, that, but does DHS. Uh, require that every dwelling unit have a a kitchen?
No, not at all, not on res care or nursing, they really treat res care and nursing pretty much the same.
So so I mean, do they call those dwelling units?
What's that?
Do they call those dwelling units?
They don't call them.
Yeah.
They call it not a licensed bed is what they would refer to them as.
They're called beds, licensed beds.
And I, so I think that 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 conversation still is uh. I don't think anything's changed there, the 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 difference between nursing care facility and residential care facility is. But I think they they both are going to fall within that. You know, the, I I don't know, I'm not entirely sure where that falls, where where the separation is, it's still gonna fall in this use category. That all of the beds at the building is already in, the multifamily. Is separate units and since. The plan is for the, you know, the the. Building plan is not changing, the the physical makeup of the building. Um, isn't changing, it still is. The, and I I don't know, whatever the not multifamily what is, it's the assisted living. So this nursing care and residential care facility are. I.
I think the ordinance has has a pretty clear definition about res care and assisted living, I don't know what it is in heaven in front of me, but. I know we've been through this nauseam and.
Yeah.
And figured it all out.
They're not, yeah, they're not separate residential units, they, and because the ordinance does. Clearly kind of have this separate. It separates them from. Multifamily or a dwelling, they're not individual dwelling units. Uh, so I think that the nursing care and residential facility are in this category of. You know, assisted living. And the multifamily is going to be in a separate. You know, I guess you can both say they are residential you type uses, but. They're not going to be. I don't think you're switching out.
Associated with extended care facilities.
And.
And I will say this.
A confusing phrase.
There's. Several confusing things in the ordinance.
I will say this in our history, which is long. We um convert back and forth between nursing and res care and units every few years because they changed the payment and how much you can actually get reimbursed. For different programs. I would not be surprised whatsoever that we end up converting this unit to ner- back to nursing care. At some point in time, because that's what we do, we're always converting them between the two payer sources to max out the right payer source. Um, so.
Yeah, it it becomes a, it becomes a defined facility, they call it a multi-level facility. So we'll have one license from DHS and it will list the sixty eight beds and then the thirty four beds, but it's really under this, it's under the same licensure. Just a different level of care.
Right.
Just a little bit lower level of care, staffing requirements are a little bit less, um, it's just a. Lower level of care.
I I think the distinction is that that you're talking about is not something that the. That the ordinance is, you know, it's not the difference between a boarding house and, I don't know, a lodging house, I'm just looking at some of the. The uses that are in. In the ordinance, where there's like a a a an actual difference, a substantial difference that the. Board or there's zoning ordinance should, you know, does take and kind of separate, like there's not a. A difference in uses, not gonna be a different impact to the community from. Nursing care facility versus residential care facility, the differences are in the funding and I imagine some of the operations that you might have inside. But it's not gonna be between, it's not as though it's going from office to multifamily or home uh, you know. So some other kind of use, boarding house versus. Studio apartments or something.
I guess, what I'm just saying. My lament. Is that this project is so big. In our little town. Of small places and I just worry. It has a huge amount of. Impervious surface around it, you know, a a big parking lot. You know, fire lanes that are paved or are they using green pavers?
They're not paved.
They're not paved, okay.
Yeah.
I I just, that's just my concern, but you know, I think that. The area needs this, it does meet the ordinance as written. And and we should probably make a motion to have the planner write a letter. Um, endorsing this change and. You know. Whatever, I'm just.
Mm hmm, yeah.
Objecting.
Well.
Whatever.
I I, well, there's, I think there's two different things, though.
Remember, this is the second time you went through that. And we've been very.
I was in the middle of a COVID. I had a fever, a hundred and four degrees on Zoom.
We can, we can, we can make an exception under those circumstances.
And I think it, this, I mean, it's a good kind of point that what what you're saying is not necessarily. Yeah, that's the, the issue is not, anything that you're saying is this is wrong, right? I mean, you you know, we, you don't like them at the ordinance. Totally fair. But like, as you said. The. What's proposed or what was already appro- proposed and approved, you know, fits under the ordinance and I think that that the clarification that they are seeking is. Not, you know, is not something that that i- impacts the application or what was approved. Um, I would be more than happy to, and we'll actually get to that later tonight, to discuss any kind of changes to ordinances that. You all. See as necessary, but it's not really. I guess, germane to this conversation. So.
So is that a motion?
In the spirit of trotting down the track. Would it be your preference to have a motion? I.
Look, yeah, I think we can do that and that.
The emotion can simply say, the board instructs the planner to include in the minutes. Whatever appropriate line you.
And and I guess, provide the applicant with a letter saying that this. Kind of change is not. Uh. Isn't gonna have an impact on the approvals they received.
Something to give to one of these expensive attorneys.
Right. Right, that's a kind of, this is.
Yeah.
Not a.
So if you can have someone make that motion or just. Let Dick paraphrase it. We'll continue on. But we do need a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion. That we um. Approve. We approve the um.
Well, why don't, can I make a, just a suggested um. Move that the board directs the town planner to provide the applicant with a letter stating that. Um, the change as submitted. Will not have uh. Any impact on the application. As approved.
Seconded.
Well, but I'm, that's your motion.
I'll second it.
Those in favor.
Got it.
Ananmas.
With noting that Neil abstained.
Yes.
Yep.
You'll get your hard copy for the lawyer, so that.
Yes, I would.
Just wanna say, our our Rockland facility is now open, we were talking about building it, it opened.
Yeah.
July seventeen, July seventeen, and the building is a lot smaller than you would imagine, so.
It's close to the same footprint as you, we're gonna see.
It's the same.
It is identical.
Second, the second couple, secondly, the uh. This building is big, but it's actually replacing the same number of beds, it's not like we're adding more of that.
I've been by that facility of where it's located, how long was the construction phase of that?
Take two years.
I think this one will be about eighteen months.
I'm your neighbor across the street from this one, so I could be curious.
So in 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 the. Before the, well, the the certificate of occupancy is granted, we need. To make sure that the. The landscaping plan has been implemented, there's a lot of concern from the neighbors. That we not. You know, that that they, that there be a lot of screaming. So. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know that the. I'm I'm just gonna call it the Solar One project, uh, because. Sincarfa. Doesn't appear to be here, I, no, there's nobody on the Zoom, is that, so the. But I, maybe we can discuss that when I talk with them, we can have a bit of a better.
But we can. Okay, we can still vote on it, right?
I don't see why not.
Yeah, we're acting off their letter that they sent to us, asking us to extend that for a year and they give a reason why they're asking for the extension, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To me, I think we can.
Okay, if that's, if you're comfortable doing that, I I don't see any reason um. Why that that wouldn't be appropriate, but they also, if you wanted to hold because they weren't here, that's, you know. I know I told them that that, I said, you know, they don't need to be, but they, I I believe they said someone was going to be, but. So. Just the history, which you all may be more familiar with than I am, uh, they. Um. They got the approval, I guess, two years ago in two thousand and one, um, December sixth, so they. They came in at the end of two thousand and two to get an extension. Um. Which was granted for to them and. Now are asking for another extension, which I only mentioned because in my memo and when I was. Reading the um site plan review ordinance. Uh. As was with the clippership, unless the approvals last a year, they may be extended. Um, and the board. May ask for a new application if after two years is what the um. The ordinance, you know, says. There's nothing about the board that doesn't prevent the board from granting uh extensions, doesn't. Require the board to ask for a new application, but it does actually say something about like two years, basically. Um. When the conversation that I had with them was. Um. I asked them, you know, was there a reason that they did not? They hadn't started, and while I don't remember exactly what the reason was, because I just assumed. Someone would be here with more knowledge on it than me. Was an issue with CMP and with, I guess, capacity in the utility, whether it's the. Substation or the lines, I'm not sure. Um, we can certainly get more. Detail on that if the board wants it. Um. I did a, I'll say like a light review. And I, what I let them know was, if nothing changed in the ordinance, then the wouldn't really, I I didn't see any reason why the board shouldn't. Grant an extension. I looked at the solar ordinance, which was. I believe it was last adopted and amended in two thousand and one before their original application. Isn't that, that ordinance is not very long, but nothing, nothing changed in there since the original uh approval. It does require site plan approval as well. Um, I, that has changed, I I don't think substantially, but it has changed. I, going through that and not being as familiar probably as the board is with the project, I didn't see anything that was like really material that would affect this project. But I have not done like an actual full review that one would need with a full application. But I, because I figured if I'm going to do that, I'll, I'll let you tell me to do it rather than.
Well.
So, but I wanted to say all of that's, that's, that's where the conversation ended with, with them. Um, I know they. Like I said, they, they are working, I think with CMP at this point, and they, they did mention that having an extension of an approval rather than uh, submitting a whole new application would be, could impact, uh, their funding. I think there's a grant that maybe is involved. So if we extend the approval, that is, that makes a difference to them rather than reapproving or, you know, providing a new approval. So.
Say in there anywhere, Mike, about, um, how many times a project can be approved before it starts that we, you went to something about two approvals, but.
It, it doesn't, as far as like whether the board can reapprove a project indefinitely. Um, all it says is that approvals expire after a year unless work substantially commenced. Applicants may request an extension for, of an approval for up to a year. Um, if it's received in writing by the planning board before the, the, uh, approval expires. Um, and then it says if work is not substantially completed with two years, the board, uh, a new application may be required by the board. So it doesn't, again, it doesn't provide a whole lot of, uh, guidance. But the, the things that are, I think, relevant is that, um, the approvals expire after a year, applicants may request extension for up to a year. Uh, they need to do that in writing. And the, if the work is not substantially commenced within two years, which it hasn't, the board is allowed to ask for another application. But there's really not much in here that says the board has to do something a certain way.
Yeah, I, I think that they're all, I mean, according to their letter, they're asking, in my opinion, for a legit reason, CMP, it's in their hands and they haven't got it back to them yet. They do state that they're going to have that back by the end of November of this year. And that construction will start, um, pending those results. In my opinion, I would be comfortable saying that we could approve this extension. However, if it does not get go, if they come back again, then we need to go through an application process again because something has changed somewhere. That's my take.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. There's, we've had no changes in the, the ordinances that have affected this project since it was adopted.
No, no. Yeah, not that I've noticed.
And, and I have to say, they were very, um, amenable to suggestions from the planning board. Remember, we asked.
Changed the raise.
Wanted a, a, you know, a, a setback to meet the Noble Borough setback because Noble Borough has a greater setback than we have.
Mm hmm.
And they changed the layout so that it would get away from that one area that we had concerns over was too close to the road. So.
Right.
Um, I, I, I think certainly they worked us in again, I, I think, um. I would be happy to, to make that. They have legit reasons and we extend this, this other time. And if they haven't got it by then, then I think we need to go back to the drawing board.
Um, the, one thing I, I was, when I was looking through it, I noticed that, um, we did ask that they, they not use any chemical vegetation suppressant, you know, that they had to um, control vegetation with mechanical means.
Okay.
So, or whatever.
Was that?
That was in.
And they, they agreed to that with the.
They did. So I mean, it says here, no changes to their site plan, so it should be in that already. And I think as long as they follow that, then.
That's, yeah. So anything that they agreed to that was in that original approval, still going to be a condition.
So I'd like to make a motion that we, um, extend the approval for an additional year.
I'll second that.
Yeah, we have a motion in a second. And any other discussion or more discussion? If not, those in favor. It's unanimous.
That's all the new business. Um, the only, the other business is not formal action, but there are some points that I wanted to discuss. Um. The the last, I think it was at the last meeting. Um, the board asked for a timeline for the site plan review ordinance amendments. And so I've looked into that. Um, but I also want to, well, let me, I, I'll say, you can expect three to four months from, if we had site plan amendments drafted and we're ready for you all today to say, yes, we like this, this is good. It'll probably take three or four months before they would become uh, you know, official adopted by the, uh, by the town, could be adopted by the town and in force. And some of that's going to have to do with, I'll, I'll just run through the process quickly. Um. If you, if we had the kind of hopeful, the final draft of any amendments, uh, today, the board could say, okay, yes, we want to move forward with this and start that formal process to adoption. The next step is basically scheduling a public hearing at the planning board for the public to come comment, you know, uh, and discuss the order, the proposed changes. After that, it would go to the select board, which would also have, they would have a public hearing, but more a public hearing to say, should we put this on the warrant? Um, and all of that requires public notice, which essentially takes three weeks because it has to be twice in the newspaper and it can't be. The second one can't be within seven days of the actual public hearing. So it takes basically, that's three, three weeks there. Getting into the newspaper is going to be a fourth, goes to the select board, they've got a basically another month, and then it has to go to a town meeting. Um, to be voted on. It could take longer. If some of this is depending on how the meeting schedule falls. We could have a special meeting for that public hearing, uh, we being the planning board, you all. Um, I don't presume to tell the select board when they should, or if they should have special meetings and how they're going to schedule things. So I say, you know, they'll have a, a month. Um, and then from their town, you know, special town meeting. Assuming that we're not going to, that you all aren't going to do it by, uh, I guess, secret ballot and put it on like with the national election or, uh, um, you know, anything like that, because you, you can do it at a special town meeting, show of hands. I imagine you've all been through and seen it. So those, those go a little bit faster because you don't need to print ballots and give time for absentee and things like that. So. Three to four months, hard to predict because of schedules and noticing and things like that. That said, the more efficiently we go through the process and get the draft, the, uh, amendments together, the sooner it, you know, um, gets there. Holidays are going to slow things down, um, and the closer you get to like the annual town meeting gets muddy, it's gonna, if we get too close to that, it's like you're gonna end up on the other side of it. So.
I, I think in the past, any major changes to ordinances have usually been to a vote.
At the town meeting.
Not at a meeting.
No, just.
For to a vote.
Yeah.
Haven't they been? I think so.
At a special.
A special.
At a special town meeting, yeah.
But a, but a vote like an election, like people can come in during the day, isn't it?
Yeah, but they, I believe the last one that we did or one of them we did, they held this at a special town meeting. So it's, it's essentially the same as, um, the time is going to be what drives it, Jenny. If it's going to be at the, the annual election in November, depend on when we had it ready. And if it was ready to go, then, then they could pile it on to that. But if not, they're going to have a special one.
Yeah.
Um, but we have done them at the special town meetings before.
If, I guess my, my point is if you get close to like the town meeting, the, the regular annual town meeting or like the November election. If you get close, it's just going to get, it makes more sense to just pilot in with that. So it could just delay it a month or two, depending on what the select board wants. After it leaves the planning board, it's kind of out of the planning board's hands. Um, and the select were really, I guess, are the ones that decide whether it's going to be, you know, secret ballot or, um, if they want to do a special town meeting and, you know, show of hands or I think, I guess you can do with the clickers here too, kind of see.
Where is, um, um. Where is this in process now?
And so that's, that's the next thing, which is, I think that the, I find that the most efficient way, if you want ordinance amendments done, is I want to make sure that I understand what the items to be addressed are so that we can, okay, great. I, you know, my, I think part of my job is to like deal with ordinances and I get into the minutia and all of this. And I would like to craft something that I can say, okay, and I'll obviously be working with Isabel or, or she'll, yeah, I'll be working with her. She'll, um, draft something that we can say, okay, this is good. And we bring it to you and say, questions, comments, concerns, and we can adjust there. So I, but I, I guess the intention is to bring you something that is essentially baked, not that you, there can't be changes or anything like that, but that you tell us what your concerns are, what you want it to address, you know, how fast you want it to go, you know, what kind of handling you want. And then we build that for you, bring it to you and you say, yeah, great, or no, we want it smaller or we want it whatever. Um, so I want to sit down with Isabel, but I want to know what it is that you all want. And that we've already had some conversations, so we don't need to rehash the screening standards. I think that Isabel's done a pretty good job nailing those down. There might be some tweaks, but as far as some of the minutia and like the phrasing, we can, you know, I can work with her to like hammer that out as long as I know what, what all you want. And I should say, this is for the more technical things because the other issue is, there's a lot of stuff that I think the more substantial changes to ordinances by recommendation is you want the public involved. I mean, obviously, you know, the planning board should be involved in all of it, but if you're, if we're talking about design standards, really kind of things that are going to be making, um, kind of character changes, things like that. Those, we should be having public workshops and, and, and doing the, what is it that you want? Asking that of more than just, uh, you know, the, the five of you and, and any other planning board members that are involved, if that makes sense.
It does.
Mm hmm. I think the first two items you listed were big concerns that we had. So those are good.
And it, yeah, putting, yeah, some sort of a procedure for neighborhood meetings. And we decided that was going to be planning board run, not applicant.
And was, the way my mind work is, we, we did a, a lot of work with Isabel in a couple of different meetings here. And unless I've missed it, I haven't seen any of that come back. So I would like to see those changes because it was all very busy the nights we were doing them.
Yeah.
And if we could get that document back, go over it, and it really is going to, in my opinion, be better at a meeting when we don't have a lot going on, that we can dedicate the, a meeting night to that, to go over that. Um, just so that we can see the changes that we talked about before, because it's been a while since we talked about it.
Yeah.
And to see those and how it's laid out now and see if it captures what we were all discussing at that time.
Yeah.
Some of these bigger issues, um. It, I mean, how should we approach those? I mean, should we have like, um, you know, a, a public workshop or a series of public workshops and, you know, invite people to come and just.
So that is, it, it, yes, I mean, my answer to that would be yes, the, the other, the caveat here is the comp plan process is going on right now, which is like basically the perfect thing. That's like when you, we're already doing a lot of public outreach. So I think we want to be mindful that we don't double up efforts there, but also that we make sure that we're, you know, we're taking advantage of that.
Can we tag on some, to some of those meetings? There's all these public meetings in October.
Yes.
That are going to be happening.
And that's, this is, I think, where we, we should have some discussion about how we want the process to go, because the comp plan probably is not going to be ready to be adopted by the town until town meeting, yeah, middle of twenty twenty four. Yeah. So at the earliest. I mean, hopefully we can hit that, but that, that, at the earliest. So this is part of the reason that, so I guess what I'm suggesting is that the, some of the design things, the building arrangements, the lighting standards, traffic, things like that, those are going to take quite a bit more time and I think probably more, uh, public input than a neighborhood meeting, the application, pre-application contact, uh, the buffer and screening. Normally I would say we should, you know, maybe hold off on that, but approval expiration and extension, significant tree stand, some of these other things that are like kind of, you can just plug them in or are more administrative. I don't see any reason to hold those up. When we can, you know, I, I don't think that the public is going to get, uh, would, I don't, I don't, I don't see any reason why the public would have a problem with, if we update the approval expiration and extension section. Like that's just not something that I don't think people get very excited about.
Yeah, I mean, you, you, you can still. You're going to still have to have some sort of public hearing.
Oh, absolutely. No, we're not cutting the public out of any of this. It's just like this kind of stuff, I think we can handle through that, the process I just described, which is discussing it here with you. I mean, everything we do is out in the public. Um, we have certainly going to have public hearings, the planning board is going to have a public hearing, the select board will have their public hearing.
So I, I think we're, we're, we have a series of three public meetings, two in October and one at the beginning of November as part of the comprehensive planning process. From those meetings, we might have a better idea of larger issues that people are concerned about. And then maybe in, well, then you get into the holiday season, but maybe, you know, in November or or something we can, we can have some sort of a a workshop or something on, on some of these bigger issues. Meanwhile, at the next, maybe, I don't know what we have scheduled for the next meeting. Maybe we could get a copy of the site plan ordinance, um, changes.
Hmm.
Well, and, and like you said, I wasn't aware of those other meetings, but if you're, if you're talking about a lot of this stuff in the comp plan meetings and have those, then it certainly wouldn't be wrong of us to wait until again, with the holidays, it's probably going to be the first of the year before we actually saw what those inputs were.
For.
And it may, it may enter a lot of those questions.
Yeah. That, that's, all of this is, I, I want to, I want to move things forward, but I don't want to, I don't want to move the big things forward without going through the proper public participation.
I mean, for these smaller, what you call, you know.
Yeah, I know, I'm calling them.
Smaller stuff.
Relative.
We, we really can't make the, the November. Um. Town meeting or, you know, election date.
I have to look at what.
I mean, that's.
Wouldn't we want to do it as a whole, though?
That'd be impossible.
No, he's talking about two, he's talking about a, a two level of approach, you know, smaller things and then bigger things. Because the bigger thing is going to take a lot more time.
And I, I say, there, there's also kind of a larger context, which is typically municipalities, when they go through the comp plan process, one of the big things that come out of the, comes out of that is, I mean, and it's required is the future land use chapter. And that really is a ideal time to now take a really hard look at all of your zoning, oh, your land use anyway. Um, and say, okay, do we want to change things? What do we want to, what do we want to do? Update? I think that there's already things that the planning board and I and other people have identified that need to be addressed. I think the kind of small, again, small, quick things, the administrative things. I want to, I, I recommend, you know, you, you all give me what direction you want. We can move those relatively quickly. Nothing in municipal government moves that quickly, but we can get those through adopted change so that the process is kind of clear, consistent, manageable. The other, these other issues that you've all already identified that we have, and without having the benefit of the comp plan, we can kind of move those forward as we get the benefit of some of the preliminary returns from comp plan. And then any big things that we get, any takeaway from the comp plan, we can address those later.
But, but isn't November the next election time? I mean, should we, should we try to aim for the November date for some of this stuff?
Or the, um,
For the minor.
The smaller things, we can try. I, what I, after going through and trying to, I, I tried to lay out like, if we get a final draft that the board is comfortable with at this meeting, we can have it at a special town, we know, we can have it go to vote by the, by the town at this meeting. And unfortunately, it's not that clear because.
You have to have the selectmen approve it.
Yeah, it's got to go through all of that.
That was, uh, uh, two hearings, one at the planning board.
Right. One select.
You, you realistically, you're not even going to get the small ones on the November ballot.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I can imagine you can carry him through that.
No. And, and what's the benefit of you and them separately versus as a whole, other than shorten up the time of meetings that you would have? But if, if these are.
Yeah.
You know, if these are relatively easy, you know, administrative changes. Why? Why couldn't we just do that as a whole and just briefly touch on when we talked about it and then do this as one change rather than?
You mean, um.
Smaller items and the bigger items.
I think that the, so the ever, the pre-application con. Pre- pre-application contact, the neighborhood meetings, the buffer screening standards, significant tree standards. And approval extension, uh, expiration and extensions, those I think, uh, all of those I think are s- small, like we can handle that. We could have essentially a a. A final draft up to you, maybe at the next meeting. The, to be addressed through a larger public process. Um. Those, I think, you would probably at least want to have some public workshop.
So are you saying the smaller ones that we don't have to hold public hearings on?
We do have public hearings, but we, the public hearing is, it's not the best way to get public input, you know? It's kind of the state statute mandated, you're not allowed to do things behind closed doors.
Right, right, right.
But I think that the. I think that the, these other, the building arrangement, the design standards, the lighting stand, well, the the lighting and traffic is gonna require, I think, some more technical. Uh, expertise that. We need to find better solutions to traffic, and we've already discussed on, it discussed, it's, it's not as easy as just saying like, it's not a parking requirement where you're like, all right, well. You want this, you have to provide this much traffic coming.
So so when when we, we put these changes on the ballot. People vote on them as a whole. They're not voting. Yes, yeah, remember, yes or no. So I think part of his interest in splitting it up. Is that these are kind of non-controversial. And, you know, um.
Yeah.
Yeah, a a and. And that maybe we could just. Have that be a separate process. I can see your point, maybe people would have. Like, uh, you know, fatigue, you know.
Correct.
On on just.
Why?
We already do that.
Right.
So that's also an issue, you know?
That, yeah, which i- I think is a fair point. I. Uh, the. These um design standards that has, have come up. I don't want to delay them until we get further down into the comp plan process or through the comp plan process. We can, that's certainly an option. Um. Things in planning typically aren't emergencies. It's, it it happens slowly. Um, but. If something comes in and you want, you want to be efficient about it, you'd, but. Not glacial. So. I I mean. The reality is, um. Yes, people do get planning fatigue. I mean, I I can feel it in the room right now. We're all, we're all kind of like, okay, really, are we gonna deal with this? I know, I know, I I feel the same way. Um, but the. The non-controversial stuff, I I don't, I don't see any issue with, like I said, going, getting those through. Yes, people, public will have. An opportunity to comment. It's not those that we wouldn't take their comments into consideration. Um, I think we can kind of get pretty close to the mark on all of those because they're kind of boring stuff generally. Um. The design stuff is where people, there's usually more of a co- community conversation. So I don't know how you want it.
You said you could have something to us by our next meeting, which will be October. So there's, there's no way it's gonna make a November. A meeting.
Special meeting? No, I don't think so.
No way. If you need, we got a whole pu- public hearing, the selectmen's gonna do their thing. We're already into December.
Yeah.
So it, I I'm okay if you want to have that, and we don't have much on the radar for the next meeting. If you want to have those ready for us to look at. I would be happy to do that and knowing that this isn't gonna go be voted on before the first of the year.
No, I don't, I don't. I don't think it could.
One, one advantage of splitting up too is people get overwhelmed by too much stuff.
Hmm.
They'll say, all this stuff you want to change. If we just have, we put into little bite-sized pieces. I think people can, can look at it, understand it, and and rather than waiting to put everything all together.
Yeah.
I'm fine with that.
The the other thing I I just want to say, the last conversation that I had with Isabel, I asked her if she could. Separate out, there's, because there's two things going on with the, the changes so far. One, one is reorganizing and moving things. So I asked if you could kind of show those, like what's been, what's just being moved that already exists and, you know, being restructured, and then also. What are new standards? The, the, the significant thing is the buffer and screening standards. Like that's, there's new stuff in there that I think we want to make sure that we have a good handle on.
Does she have like a Google Doc that we can look at that, that has her, her changes?
Uh, I can ask her. Yeah. And the only thing I'm thinking about is like the, I don't think they're called like sunshine laws, but when, you know, to share, I guess, as long, if we can share. Probably.
Well, that's all right. I'm okay with a piece of paper.
Yeah, I mean, we we could share like a static document, I think, and you could.
Static, not something that would be changed.
Yeah, that's, well, I guess we can get some, we can definitely share something with you, but I mean, not editable.
Okay, so I just want to say. That what we really need to work on is the sign standards.
Sign standards.
Our our signage um ordinance is terrible. Awful. We have a new electronic sign. Coming up in town like every, every couple of weeks and they're all, I mean. The it, what defines a sense of place, which is what people, you know, are all about, Damar Scotta being, you know, someplace special. Is the way it looks. And if you have all these crazy signs and these big monuments like, you know, Hammond has and. Damar Scotta hardware, these huge. Things. And then you have Bangor Savings Bank came into town and realized, wow. Signs on our buildings don't count, you know, in square footage of the signs. So. Every face, you know, tons of signage on their buildings. That's got it. We've got to like rein it in because this place is is looking tacky.
I I think a lot of this stuff, I I mean, I. I don't disagree, but I don't, my place is not really to make policy decisions. That's you all, that's the select board, that's the voters. Um, but a lot of those things you're talking about that I'm like, oh, I think other communities are discussing this at the next thing. A lot of that is exactly what you want to come out of a comp plan, and I think that's like you go. We, as the complaint's going on, these are questions we want to post to the public, post to the committee.
That that it's just, I just.
Because there's a lot, and and also there's a lot of stuff that goes into. What you're talking about, that kind of character, the the sense of place, it's not just the signs, it's not just the buildings, it's also. Where buildings are, how big streets are, you know, there's a lot of stuff.
But but we, we have not. Regulated signs at all in this town, as opposed to other towns around us have done a really good job. You know?
Yeah.
And and.
It's a slow process. I I'll tell you, it's not, none of this happens quickly, planning.
Yeah.
Tends to be slow, but that's why I want to make sure that we get kind of on a steady pace because. Hopefully, at the end of five years, we can look back and say, you made lots of progress, even if it wasn't all within, you know, six months.
All right.
Well, let's proceed.
Okay. That's, that was the big thing that I've got. Um. I I have a couple of signatures, so after the meeting, let me just get you all to sign a couple of things, just pass minutes and resolutions. And then I don't know if you wanted to do questions from the public.
She's.
Go ahead.
That's all I've got.
There's nothing big coming down the pike.
Um, as far as applications, there, there were supposed to be two applications, I'll say like. Tonight, we didn't have a really overloaded. It would have been a good time to at least make some progress on the uh site plan review ordinance. But there were two applications. One is gonna be a. I think both actually are site plan um shoreline zoning issues, but. They just weren't together. So when they get a complete application, bring it to the board.
Sounds like a compliment to me. Uh, in the spirit of going home, I'll enter in a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second.
Those in favor?
All right.
Do you?
Okay, so let me give you what needs to.
It's really.